Yeah, we probably just not even meet up after the meeting. You know.
Yeah, I've got a funeral, I've got to go until ten o'clock, so.
And then just go ahead and call me when you want to reschedule.
Sure.
Set up a time.
Perfect. Actually Jeremy, any day this week that works for you? Today's the only day I got conflicts.
All right, we have eight o'clock, I will call a meeting to order, can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public discussion?
Here's the best community, public speaking.
Yep, if you'd like, can you come up and introduce yourself if up to the podium, if you're able?
Yeah. Good morning, my name is Jeremy Steinkor, I've been a resident for, I'd say at least going on at least twenty years. Twenty years ago, I was a totally different person than I am today. Anyways, some things have changed in Cassuth County, I think it needs to be brought to everybody's attention. I, uh, went to Bancroft City Council meeting yes, last night, and I plan on going to, I'll go on a city council meeting on the twenty first, and I thought we could come and talk to you guys about a few things. Uh, I'm gonna start by reading a few letters here that I got in mail to me anonymously, uh, since everything has been going on. We'll start with the first letter, Jeremy Hartfeld, thank you for standing up for, standing up to, I won't mention a name, a powerful small town cattle renter in the town of Bancroft. Jeremy, your courage and determination challenges status ego and fight for what is right is truly commendable. Your actions demonstrate a strong commitment to justice and the well-being in the community. And I appreciate the willingness to take on quotation, quotation, the tough guys. I don't have much to my name, but here's a small sum of cash to support you in your effort. For some reason, a two dollar Lincoln bill, I think there's gotta be something behind that. Okay, second one, J S, you are not alone, I am also being harassed by the town's big cattle rancher. He is also driving down my street, hollering at me, et cetera. Keep up the fight on social media, I feel that we are going through the same adversity together. Then a little bit of hate mail in the box. I feel sorry for your daughter, to mention I am a single father of a fifteen year old amazing daughter. Uh, I didn't have parents growing up as a child, uh, so I didn't have very much to say, but I'll tell you, my daughter is doing way better than I ever did in my life. She's already outdone me, she's fifteen years old, uh, she's got a great head on her shoulders and she's looking for the great future ahead. Uh, so somebody thinks that, I feel sorry for your daughter, all you're teaching her is not to work and just work the system. You don't work, I hope you get caught effing over the government, you're not disabled, you're just lazy, all you did was drugs. And that's what I talked about twenty years ago, I was known as a pretty good drug addict here in Cassuth County. Roger himself and Art Eagles came to my house, I was about OD'd on methamphetamines.
Okay, Jeremy, um, we've already gone through a couple minutes, if you could wrap up your comments in another two minutes, that would be great.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was a limit.
We try to keep things moving.
So should I just stop now and just come back next Tuesday? That'll work?
Do you think you can't keep comments within a couple minutes?
I got a couple more minutes.
If you want two more minutes or whatever, that's fine, yep.
Okay, I don't know where I left off. Can you remind me where I stopped?
Just about your history, twenty years ago.
Okay, okay, so I must have read this letter?
Yep.
Okay. We'll just go over one more letter then, and then I'll read what I got up here, what I came here for.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll skip the letters. Okay? Okay, like I just mentioned, Roger Fisher seen me at my worst, okay? He's also seen me at my best, uh, a couple months ago, I don't know when it was, I called in for citizen of the month and nominated, somebody said, Jeremy, I thank you for being so involved in the community. Uh, Roger Fisher, I had, I had two guys come to my house in town and threaten me, uh, nothing was done. Uh, then I believe that I was, uh, Rattimer overtook his powers and kinda shoved me on my own property. I feel that, uh, he did not, uh, assess the situation, I think he escalated it instead of de-escalating the situation. I think there's better ways to work around it, I can come back next Tuesday, talk about that. Obviously something's going on, if you've seen the sign by Burke, I'm not the only one that's upset. Uh, another thing, I've been trying to watch the body camera footage of that night, but it happened in July, I believe July twenty fourth, and yet to this day have I been able to watch that video of my, body camera footage. The first twenty seven seconds of the video has no volume, and that is the most important part of the video. Why do we need to update our cameras in Cassuth County? Do we all, and does Roger wear a camera? I don't believe so, but I think it's time we need to update our cameras and get functioning body cameras. And I'm just gonna end at that, that way I don't take up everybody's time, and I will see you guys next Tuesday at eight o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, is there anything you'd like to respond to right now?
I wonder if you guys have any questions?
Okay, appreciate it.
Questions, I'm, I'm pretty fine with Jeremy speaking, if you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for public discussion? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Motion and a second?
Who, I'm sorry?
Uh, Roger and Jack. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, next is to review and approve the claims and conservation claims. Has everyone seen those in our packet? Any questions, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Just out of curiosity, do we know what we're up to now for Ailer McCooney pipeline fees for the year?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
And that's why we can, we can get that later.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Reminded me, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, nope, we did, okay.
Is there a motion for the claims?
I'll move to approve claims.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I abstain.
Abstain, okay. All right, motion carried unanimous with one abstention. All right, next up is the budget status report. Is there any questions on that from the board?
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, thank you. There's a minute. And then this is.
Got more to sign?
No, uh, yes, we do, but that was the first stack, and then I got, oh, I'll do that, thanks. Yep, we do have more.
Is Dan coming this morning?
Um, I don't know, I'm gonna look and check my email and see if I have any email from him.
He's usually here. Yeah, he usually is.
Yeah, so, you know, um, we will postpone it till next week.
Okay. And if he comes in, we can.
No, he's not, he had sent me an email, he's not going to be here.
He's not going to be. Abstain, oh, I didn't stand that one. Thank you. Do you wanna give Doug a call for the, so he can come up here? While we're signing?
Phone just on him.
Yeah, morning Doug Carter. Hey, we are up to setting the date for the public hearing. Yep, you bet. Bye.
Maybe, um, you or I are supposed to listen in touch base with Roger afterwards, Roger Fisher, if Jeremy wants to come back and have a more in-depth discussion, we can actually put that on the agenda to have a discussion with him and Roger Fisher, if that's something he needs more time.
Okay.
We don't need a hour of public discussion.
Hi. Oh, I come in, I was just gonna open the door.
You're supposed to direct traffic.
It happened.
Traffic jam.
Good morning.
Morning Doug. At least we didn't have a crash.
Good breaks Doug.
You had pretty good breaks.
All right, after that excitement, we are up to the setting a date and time for the public hearing. Uh, Tammy or Doug or?
Yeah, so we, um, have been working with Amy at Dorsey Whitney, and they sent us all the information, um, it's in your packets, um, what we need to set the date and time for a public hearing, on the designation, on the designation of the expanded Cassuth County Buffalo Township Economic Development and on urban renewal plan amendment. So as you can see by what's in your packet, they're recommending setting the date and time for November twelfth. Um, Doug, did you have a time specifically that you wanted?
No, I, um, it needs to be on that, uh, we need to do it today instead of for the for the twelfth, yes.
Yeah, and we, um, are setting the date and time by resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Should we aim for like nine or ten, or, I mean, we've done public hearings anywhere from eight thirty to ten, I guess, typically.
Does nine work okay for you Doug?
Sure.
For you guys?
Any issues from the board with nine? Okay.
Nine o'clock.
Um, and then, I would assume at our boardroom here?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, I thought about this before too, crossed my mind, Weston Mallard School District, are they not an involved party as well, or? I just noticed they're not usually included in.
Yeah, it's. It's only the, the TIF dollars that are affected, so they don't have any.
It'd be, it'd be where they, the dollars should be generated, so it'd be, it'd probably be too far out of their.
So it's not necessarily just if the school district isn't counting?
It's whether the TIF dollars are, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, yep.
Okay, good question, um. Any other questions or thoughts on this before we set a date and time? All right, if not, um, we have a resolution number. Uh, it'd be fifteen, ten, fifteen, twenty four, zero, one, for this resolution that's in our packet. Is there a motion to that effect?
I also moved to nine o'clock.
Okay, yep, nine o'clock on November twelfth here at the boardroom. I'll, I'll second that. Um, any further discussion on the resolution? Roll call vote please.
Claps?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carries unanimous, we will hold our public hearing at that date and time. And we will get signatures here, um. All right.
Just for my file as well, please.
Yep.
If you would, please, thank you.
This is this one?
That's his copy of the resolution.
Yeah, that's the whole resolution, have Tammy sign it, please.
Oh, yep, fantastic.
Thank you.
And there's that one, yep, thank you. And thank you both for getting that ready, um. Next up, we have a secondary road.
May I just mention a couple of things, I guess? Uh, Amy also wanted us to mention and to make sure, uh, we need now to get the notice published, uh, not less than four, not more than twenty, so, uh, days, so we gotta make sure that is taken care of, and I'm sure Tammy's already got that process already going.
Yeah, I had Kyle sign that this morning, so.
Uh, consultation session with the school boards, um, or not the school boards, with the schools, we gotta get that taken care of, and that has to be held by October twenty nine, uh, twenty twenty four, so we wanna make sure that gets taken care of. The planning and zoning commission, they are required to meet to consider the plan prior to the public hearing, and they will have to, uh, put together a report, report back to the, uh, board supervisors. And, uh, I don't know, uh, joint agreements, that's gonna be talked about tonight, but we do have to have all those executed prior to the public hearing.
No.
But Amy did ask, make sure that was, uh, mentioned.
Okay. Anything else for that topic? Okay. Next up on our agenda is secondary road, department equipment purchase, Doug?
Uh, yeah. We, uh, are in the need of a new tag trailer, we have a tag trailer that was, uh, I think it's a nineteen ninety two model, we're trading in to get a Trail King, uh, TK fifty LP, which is, uh, in twenty twenty three, May of twenty twenty three, we, uh, actually asked for the same, uh, trailer. Um, I asked for quotes from Ziegler Cat and Altorfer Cat, I only received a quote from Ziegler. Uh, Altorfer did not provide a quote. So, I would like to open this with the idea that we're gonna purchase it if we're, if the board is not satisfied with one quote, I'll, I'm gonna open it. So, but there will be a price on it, and I wanna make sure that the board, um, is okay. In twenty twenty three, the trailer that we actually purchased was an alternate that Ziegler had, uh, proposed. I think the trailer that we specified, the, uh, Trail King was fifty one thousand. The trailer that we purchased was actually thirty seven, um, thousand, so.
So is this the same like weight and ratings and classification as the one we just got last year?
It's what I quote, when I asked for a quote, Ziegler provided an alternate equivalent, so. And we've been using that trailer and are very satisfied with it, to be honest with you, it's been, been a good trailer for us, so. So, does the board? Is there any concerns from the board supervisors?
Are we already over our budget for equipment for this year, for what's purchased and, um, obligated?
The line item, but not in the, not in the general roadway. And the complete budget, we're not over, so.
My only concern would be if it's ridiculously high price.
I would understand that as well.
Then I would say.
If it would be, but we only have one bid, and if, if we would decide because of the price, that's one thing. But if your concern is we only have one, one quoted price, that's my question.
I'm not concerned with that as long as the price is relevant.
Is the rest of the board the same?
I'd, I'd be okay with that, yeah.
And to answer the budget, we can afford to do this.
Okay.
We're gonna have to get one, cause the other, the other one is, is, uh, is not functional. So, the price of the Trail King with the trade ended up, the net purchase price is forty one thousand eight hundred. They did provide an alternate, and, uh, this would be a Towmaster, which is what we purchased, uh, with the trade, it's thirty six thousand eight hundred, so it's actually two hundred dollars less than what we paid May of twenty twenty three.
We bought a Towmaster last year?
We did. I would recommend that the board would accept this.
To examine the cheaper of the two?
The Towmaster, yes.
If you're happy with the other one, then yeah.
Yes, yeah. I would.
Okay.
I'm just gonna fill out this, so it would be approved, the purchase of Towmaster.
Do you have the exact dollar figure on that for the notes, or for the minutes?
I will get it.
Yeah.
From Ziegler Cat. For thirty six, I'm gonna put down
Thirty six eighty.
Um, forty thousand five hundred less, three thousand dollar, three thousand seven hundred dollar trade in, net purchase price of thirty six eight hundred, is that all right?
Okay.
Okay. All right, and we have a motion to approve that purchase? Yeah, we have a motion and a second, you have that already? Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. I'm an abstain. Uh, motion carries. Um, anything else for that Doug?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the motion and who made the second.
Roger made the motion and Jack seconded it.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
And if there's nothing else.
I'll get that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Language to you.
Yeah, sounds good.
And we can go to construction in the right of way, whenever you're ready.
Okay, we do have, uh, one request for construction in the road right of way. Um, we spoke about it a little bit last week, Dennis Bolling, uh, requested cross the road between sections eight, sections nine of Seneca Township. Dennis has provided all the information to us, they are actually starting to do that work today. Um, I would recommend that the board would approve of this, this is all according to Cassuth County policy.
I'll make motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Snapper and Whacker.
Yeah.
All right, if you could sign there on the bottom, Kyle, please, thank you. Thanks.
There you go.
And that's all the requests for construction in the road right of way.
All right, ready for discussion?
Yes, uh, the bridge is being constructed right now by, uh, Dana Orendorfers and George Gunter's, uh, the substructure is complete. They are working on placing a little bit of riprap, constructing all their false work. Um, we would anticipate that they would be pouring, uh, the end of October, beginning of November. Just kinda depends on how all their work goes. Uh, the crossing up at, uh, four eightieth street with the drainage, uh, DD sixty work that has been completed now. Uh, we are still working with FEMA, getting claims going on that. Uh, the road department is working on roads and mowing, uh, the railroad crossing, uh, east of Wesley, or excuse me, Whitmore, uh, we've been communicating with the railroad, the railroad did come in and welded some, some of the panels together and patched up, so they did do a little bit of work last week. That's kind of everything from the, uh, engineer's side. Um, zoning, uh, unfortunately, we had a member of the planning and zoning commission and the board of adjustment pass away, um, so the board needs to, uh, get another person on both of the, the commission and the board of adjustment. That's really all that I have.
All right, anything from the board? All right, thanks Doug.
Thank you, you guys have a good day.
Thank you, I did touch much, but I will go grab it.
Um, maybe put a note for, uh, planning and zoning and board of adjustment member for your agenda item.
Yeah.
Next week, if we can find someone, that'd be good, I do have someone.
With as much going on, it'd be good to have somebody in there sooner or later.
Yep. If not, we can delay it, but if we can get someone, it'd be good to get that done.
We can get a name to Tammy.
Okay.
Yep.
That's been starting on what we're doing this week.
Is there still more after that? Okay, thank you.
We had to go very well.
Find her?
You have to touch your brakes again?
Yeah, I did. Good thing they're working.
At least they're working.
Hi, Marjorie.
As long as they're not crocs on a wet floor.
That's right.
All right, first thing up here for drainage is our transfers made by the auditor's office. Those were in our folder, is there any questions from the board? Thoughts or discussion or anything?
Minnesota lateral, that's all, so I hold it in that.
Which?
We haven't received.
Sixty sub one?
Yeah.
We haven't received that, uh, which, yeah. We haven't received that agreement, do I need to send that out?
The payment from them?
You have not received?
We have not received that yet.
We, yeah, we need to be touch base with that.
Send a letter or something.
We, we need that issue.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, it was supposed to be due the same time as taxes for everybody else.
Right.
So I can talk with you after the meeting and we can give them a call, they've always been good to
Okay.
communicate with, so.
But, I don't know about that slide, no.
Right, right, that'll make a difference on.
Yep, it, that'll affect interest for sure. Uh, so yeah, we did need to get that checked. And then I guess just maybe a general question here for everybody's understanding. To follow all these, we need to correlate them with the assessment sheet we did
Right.
in the spring, right?
Right.
Okay. That's what I was thinking, I hadn't, I hadn't set them all side by side and line by line compared, but I was pretty sure that's what, what you were outlining here.
Thank you for doing this.
Clarifying.
Yeah, appreciate the extra information.
It brings bells now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the more we do this going forward, the easier it'll be for all board members to follow and understand, but I think this is a good new step in the process, so the board can be aware of how that money is flowing and making sure that it's going to the right place and yeah, I think that's good.
Is there a way we can, um, add in like with the, the project total or where we're at for?
Well, this is just the The transfer. This is just the transfer.
The transfers and then?
And then once it goes in there, then you'll be able to do that. Yeah, this is just the transfers, so.
I wonder if we could have a little bit different.
Yeah, my curiosity is, you know, we're transferring this and where are we at, you know, percentage wise for the total? You know, we've got this much in, how much are we expecting to need yet?
Yep.
So, that's kind of what I was thinking.
I wonder if we set up an Excel sheet that was correlated with the one we have now for assessments and had another sheet that would have transfers and then have your outstanding balance.
We could put transfers in that spreadsheet.
Yeah, but there's our, so there's already a lot of columns, I mean, it fills up the whole page, but if we had a separate sheet inside the same document, you can reference those numbers across, so you're not actually changing them multiple times. And probably set up a sheet that would be a quick comparison of outstanding and what was assessed and what came in and what was transferred by the month. So might be just an idea to think about.
But that's what we have now, we just insert the transfer in there, so it'd all be in the same sheet, cause otherwise, I think.
But we would do transfers more than, or is it just twice, mostly just twice a year?
Yeah, they're, they're probably still, that came in in October, so it'd be more transfers and
Okay.
Or some money.
I'm just thinking your columns of months and when they came in and when they were transferred.
Yeah.
That might add some columns to it, but yeah, that'd be possible. I mean, this, I think that's a good start, but always, you know, good information. Jack or Roger, see anything else you think we should have here? Um, do you guys like the format or what do you think?
I like the information and, you know, that we get the, the line item numbers and everything like that, with it, that's good information, so.
Looks like the gears are
It's complicated.
I was gonna say, it looks like the gears are turning, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking about what you were saying, it's very complicated to put all this in a spreadsheet and have it make sense.
Yes, yeah, because they're different fund numbers going from here to there and to match them up.
Yeah, your fund numbers are gonna confuse it.
Right, but it would be, and it would be a little bit of setup in the beginning, but if you put in formulas that pull those numbers automatically from your first page to a second page, you would update them yearly when you do assessments and stuff on that first page, but then that number would automatically flip over to the second if you've got formulas built in there. It's kind of what I was thinking to automate it as much as possible.
And we already have that, that first spreadsheet set up.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have the, we have the first page in my head, but in, in my head, we could build a second one that would directly correlate to the first one, that would highlight just transfers and, and show the outstanding versus transfers.
But now, now you know the outstanding
Yeah, the outstanding reflect.
And if you can match that to what's left on that same spreadsheet, we don't need anything else.
Right, and that's, that's the whole point of creating that spreadsheet.
Yep.
In my mind, am I wrong, that's, I'm
Well, I mean, as we talked, as we talked with the public hearings and stuff, I mean, we need the comparison of the outstanding bill for the drain and any outstanding waivers that people are paying on and whatever that difference is, is what we should be assessing relatively.
But that's
So we would, we would have that already, but this, but this shows the transfers of how they get to the end destination, so it's not, I don't know, it's just
Transfers don't correlate to the warrants.
But we should be able to, we should be able to run a report from Solutions with the transfers, so once we, if we can do that, then we should be able to balance that.
If they have a report, yeah, maybe.
There's specific, just the transfers, but it's on the monthly reports. Yeah. So.
Okay, yeah. Well, yeah, I think it's
This is good information, cause it reminds us of what's going on.
Yeah.
Long overdue.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is good.
Actually, when a project is done, we kind of put it to bed before, never looked at it again, and now, now we're back looking at it, so.
But I, yeah, and I guess at the end of the day, we still need to correlate whatever's outstanding with what's supposed to be coming in, and if there's any shortfall, that's when you would address it right away, which should be fairly simple, but showing the transfer shows that it's going into that outstanding balance, so. It's, it's good. I guess food for thought, and we can obviously keep thinking about it if anyone comes up with a great idea, but Tammy and Marge.
Projects and then we wouldn't have everybody.
Do what?
Bond them all, like Minnesota does.
Stop giving waivers, anyone up to whatever.
They borrow all the money in here.
But some counties do that, don't allow they
They don't give out waivers?
No, they make them, get them from the bank.
There's also some counties that assess more than what the repairs are to have cash on hand for some of that stuff and we haven't really had that policy here and maybe it's something that we could, especially for smaller stuff, I mean.
The banks have lower interest rates than we have anyway, so it's better for the landowners.
Your, your problem is
Probably not right now.
How do you determine the right amount in each drainage district, cause they're all different sizes and they're all different ages, so what is the right dollar?
I think the, in that regard, probably something relatively per acre, I mean, you could say, you can say we're gonna have a target of five or ten dollars an acre and then you multiply that by what's in the district and then that could be your floating target, I mean, obviously that's just spitballing, I mean, you could, you could say two dollars, you could say a hundred, you could say whatever the figure is, but if you multiply it by the acres, you would have different dollars in the accounts, but it'd be proportional. Um, I don't know, I mean.
But, yeah, and then if you had that balance, you wouldn't assess anything if you had a balance of over a dollar an acre, is what you're saying?
I mean, you could, you could say you're aiming for somewhere between five to ten and you get it up to ten and then if you're down at seven, you don't do an assessment until you're under five or something, I don't know, I mean, you could structure it a hundred different ways, I mean, to, kind of to your point is, yeah, maybe you wouldn't need to do an assessment for something small, I don't know. But then you would, you would kind of eliminate that interest expense that occurs right away if there was a little bit of cash sitting in the account for small stuff. Because otherwise, they can't pay till it's assessed anyway.
Yeah, well, the way we do projects is really, it was good fifty years ago, but now when you get engineering fees that, that sometimes get in a hundred and two hundred and three hundred thousand and you're paying interest on that for three years.
Or more.
I think we should have a different plan.
Yeah, definitely, we're considering.
Cause if you're gonna do a project, you should, some of that should be pre-funded by the district, instead of paying all that interest and having warrants out for year after year after year. You should come up with something better.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm saying it's our case, what we're doing.
I would agree with that, yeah. I mean, and, and yeah, we could have that conversation, whether it's next week or whenever, but yeah, I mean, we could, we could try and pick a dollar figure and say this is gonna be our target and instead of doing a assessment for a two thousand dollar BMW spraying bill, we might have that sitting in the account already type thing, I mean, I don't know. And then, yeah, I would get into engineer fees in the beginning too, but
The other thing is though, is if you get that, you know, two thousand dollar spraying bill and you use that out of the account, then you're gonna still need to reassess to put that back into the account.
Well, if you do kind of what Roger was asking or saying, if you had a, like, DD force forty-six thousand acres, if you have a balance of ten dollars per acre, that'd be a half a million almost, so if you had a fifty thousand dollar repair bill, you wouldn't get down to your five dollar per acre number until you did a significant amount of things and then you would kind of trip it again, if you had a district that was only five hundred acres, you might have five thousand dollars in there and then if your goal's to get down to do another assessment, if you're below five dollars an acre, then you'd be at twenty-five hundred for your bottom number and if you had a two thousand dollar spraying bill, you wouldn't hit that target, that's, that's kind of, you wouldn't have to do an assessment every single time bill came in, if it was within your parameters maybe, but
The only thing you're gonna have to figure out is, if you have a three hundred thousand dollar balance in a drainage account, what are you gonna do with that money to put it on interest? And how are you gonna correlate all that interest all the time, you're gonna have a big, big fund, or are you going to do each one separately in a bank, or how are you gonna do that?
Well, and that'd be something we'd need to, first, I'd say, find out what we can and can't do with it, because it'd be drainage district funds and I don't know what or how you could even use that to benefit the district. So we'd probably need to check legalities and make sure that's something we could do. And we could say it's, this is a number and not to exceed X amount of dollars, I mean, you could say, don't go for a hundred thousand or something, I mean, whatever, but
There, there's counties that have a fund that they have for drainage, that's not correlated to the districts, but they draw money out of that fund to pay for small repairs.
But is that general tax dollars though?
No, it comes out of drainage. I don't know how they get the money anymore.
I don't think they do, they can't do that anymore.
Yeah, I don't, so, you have to have it with the drain.
Sure, I was thinking that.
There are, where some of that did exist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then once they got into stamp warrants, then they had to.
Do away with that.
I'm wondering if that was legal or not.
Yeah, because, I mean, just the function of the code, I don't think you would want to do that because the landowners that are paying for that as an assessment on their district, they're supposed to be paying for facilities that they benefit from, so their money shouldn't go to some other district over here because they had a small repair. It would have to be kept segregated.
So essentially, if we're gonna do what you're talking about doing, we'd have to have a separate fund for every district.
We already, we already have
We do, you have to.
That, I mean, these are examples.
I mean, to like have dollar figures in every, so you'd have to
If, if we set it, if we set it up where we had a goal for a dollar amount for each district, then yeah, you, if you did it by acres, you'd say, okay, this district has X number of acres and this is our target, but you would put it in the fund for the drain, so you wouldn't have new accounts, you would just have a new goal. Um, and that's preference, for lack of a better term, I mean, there'd be pros and cons both ways, I suppose.
Yeah, well, the other part about engineering fees, I think you're gonna have to see if you can set something up where you pre-assess the district for dollars, if you start a big project.
The caveat to that though, is if you did an assessment today for a district that files a petition to do an improvement and they go through the improvement and they build the improvement, the classification schedule before and after the improvement aren't necessarily gonna be the same.
Right.
Especially if you only do a partial or something out of the ordinary a little bit. So if you do an assessment on the front end, it's not guaranteed to be equitable on the, on the final, um, or at the back end of the project, so that would be a little bit of a
I'm, I'm not gonna guarantee it's equitable on the back end of a project now, after it is done, it is reclassified, so.
Yeah, that would be tough.
Yeah.
We could do a pre-class and we could require a pre-class and then you pay for your engineering on the pre-class and whatever percent of the estimate or something, I mean, you could do something that way, but at least then that would be based off the anticipated schedule. I don't know.
Something to think about, we could do a pre-class and do it after that.
Cause you're not really, you don't really waste any work unless the project doesn't get built. So you could do that after the public hearing. You could do your public hearing and make sure it's past the remonstrance period and then once it is, do your pre-class, do an assessment and while the project's being built, you could have something in the funnel for money, maybe.
I think it's a better idea than leaving them go for three years, I just, that's starting to bother me, I've, we're paying too big of engineering fees anymore.
Well, and unfortunately
The project
Don, you get all this screaming that costs too much.
Well, and unfortunately, some of them, the ones that are three years are when the project's moving efficiently. We've got a couple with Minnesota, one that's done and one that's in the process that are not, are not three years, yeah, they're ten years and that's
That money should have been collected.
Yeah.
It's something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, there's a lot of pieces to that puzzle. Well, I guess, any other thoughts on that, or does anyone wanna have a discussion about how we do drainage, like whether it's next week or a couple of weeks, or do like a workshop or something and try and brainstorm on some of this stuff again, I mean, we can do whatever, but obviously, right now, we're mostly focusing on the transfers and a little discussion's okay, but if we wanna set a little more time for a specific conversation about this stuff, we could, in the future.
I could have them on the agenda someday.
Okay.
Discussion decision.
Okay.
On new projects, especially.
Probably, probably just in, in our policy and how we handle that, we could outline it there. And then it would be
Might have to have a drainage attorney
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Cause there's, I think you're trading on some ground there that none of us are not the, the legals in and out in and all of that.
Let me find the code section. Let me find the code section. I know there's something with the drainage.
For adopting a new policy, it's always good to have.
Yeah, I mean.
An, an attorney involved there.
I think it's four sixty eight one twenty seven.
Well, we can discuss that more later.
So, in this, it's just verbatim, what's in the code, it's four sixty eight one twenty seven, it's the cost of the repair improvements provided for. Section four sixty eight one, one twenty six, shall be paid out of the funds of the levy or drainage district. If the funds on hand are not sufficient to pay such expenses, the board within two years shall levy an assessment sufficient to pay the outstanding indebtedness. And leave the balance which the board determines is desirable as a sinking fund to pay maintenance and repair expenses. Any assessment made under this section, um, which is computed less than five dollars, shall be fixed at some of five dollars. Um, so that does kind of talk about the. One, you need to pay, you need to assess what's outstanding, but two, it does have stuff about leaving a balance which the board determines desirable. As a sinking fund for maintenance and repair expenses, so that is outlined in the code. Um, we could have an attorney for that, but that's pretty black and white to me. And it does talk about your options to do. Up to twenty installments for your waivers and stuff, so. But that's, that's a pretty short and easy code section to read. So I guess, I don't know, does that answer your question or concern there, Jack, or, or just more in general?
It's talking about. A repair that you assess for, but it's not, it didn't say anything about just assessing for no repair.
Well, it talks about.
Just assessing to assess to, to have money in the, in the fund.
I mean, it, it says, leaving the balance which the board determines is desirable as a sinking fund to pay maintenance and repair expenses. Um.
That's talking about money that's left over from the repair.
Yeah.
It's not addressing the idea that, oh, we're just gonna assess. Drain thirty, a hundred thousand dollars for no reason, just to have, just to put money in, into a fund. You're saying it has to just, it has to be tied with the project or repair or? Well, I don't know, I'm just saying that what he's talking about is money left over from an assessment for a repair project. For a repair or improvement.
So I think, I think some of that's answered with how it's written here, I mean, it's, it's obviously in sentence format for a reason, but I mean. It talks about the cost of repair or improvements provided, and that shall be paid out of the funds of the levy or drainage district, period. If the funds on hand are not sufficient to pay such expenses, the board within two years shall levy an assessment sufficient to pay. The outstanding indebtedness and leave the balance which the board determines desirable, so. It's talking about if the funds on hand are not sufficient. For any of those reasons, I think, but. I mean, whether we do an assessment on a district that's had no history of repairs in the last. Ten or twenty years is maybe something we can talk about, but if we're doing something. Uh. Countywide, I guess, if it's not used, it's gonna stay there, but. I don't, I don't know if it's a huge advantage or not, I mean, some of it would be a case by case basis. And that you could handle at the same time as another assessment, maybe, and maybe we just focus it on. Drains that are getting a new assessment in years going forward, that could be our target for ones that are actually getting an assessment. If they're not getting, if they're not needing any assessment, maybe you'll leave them alone. But.
We're having a lot of discussion about something that's not on the agenda.
Well, yeah.
If I prefer to have it.
We can, yeah, we can have a drainage workshop or discussion.
We're just acknowledging the transfers made.
Yeah.
It's a long acknowledgement, but, yeah.
Well, we'll let the record reflect that the transfers are acknowledged, unless there's any specific. Questions or comments to the transfers. All right, then we got repair requests.
Thank you.
Roger, you got one?
Yeah, I got one on green, one eleven, um, broken tile and drainage district eighty three. Big hole in the twelve inch tile, it's been taken care of already, Tripple, he was out there and looked at it, and I told him to repair it.
Okay. All right, I've got one ten in drainage district eighty two for Blakeburg lateral seventeen B. In section fifteen of Lincoln Township, replace three hundred fifty feet of eight inch tile. That's number one ten, number one twelve is section thirty of Hebron for Dean Gale House. Wash out on the bank and outlet pipe on the open ditch there. Then, number one thirteen is also for Dean Gale House in section twenty of Lead Yard, repairing a surface drain. And I believe that's all we got, is there a motion for these repair requests?
Some of it. A little second.
All right.
I don't need to do that.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, motion carried unanimously. Anything else for drainage, Marge? All right, thank you. There's those.
Thank you, Margaret.
We are up to a discussion with our auditor.
So, Carter, I did add up what we have in pipeline attorney fees, it's almost seventeen thousand, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does anyone wanna see these numbers, or pass them down, I suppose?
Um, so ten o'clock, we have the public test, you don't have to stay for the whole test, but I would like you to. Come and see what we do, um, and uh how we perform our public test before every election that we have. And then at seven o'clock tonight, we have the joint meeting with the cities regarding the. Buffalo Township urban renewal. Next week. Um, an update from the county recorder regarding Iowa Land Records annual report. And recording fee, revenue and modernization report, approving the quarterly reports and just the other, um. Monthly stuff that we usually have. Our office is very busy, tomorrow we start absentee voting, which means our absentee ballot requests that we've gotten. Will go up, or our ballots will go out tomorrow, um, we'll continue absentee voting till November fourth. Um, we have the public tests, and then next week we start training for election workers, um, we just have a lot going on, so.
Yeah.
And I think that's all I have.
Sounds good, thank you, uh, Jack. Roger?
Nope, didn't have any.
Josh?
Yeah, our, uh, um, hazmat meeting did get pushed back, and I did not get a notice of that until. The night before, um, so we're doing that on the sixteenth instead. Um, just tomorrow, uh, did do, go to our, uh, T S B committee meeting, um. Won't get into the weeds too much, but we've got some different projects that we're, um, looking at doing for. Uh, assessments for counties and stuff like that in regards to, um, technology wise, security wise, um. Things like that, discussing, um, further movements on, uh. The paying I T forward, uh, the, the. T S B committee kind of works with counties that don't have, um, I T support that they. Kind of work to provide, we're just kind of updating the, the project outlines on, on that, um. And approved our budgets.
All right.
No meetings.
No meetings, and I didn't either, so, all right, um. Yeah, Tammy already touched on the public test, so hopefully everyone can stick around for that, at least for a little bit. Um, yeah. I think that's all I got.
Seven o'clock tonight.
Yep, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. For a second? Second, um, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, we're adjourned at nine o'clock.
Nine oh one.
Oh, it just flipped. I'm gonna call that nine o'clock in my head, anyway.